All right, good evening. I'd like to call this City of Urbana City Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Will, here. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from previous meetings. There are none. Second item, sorry, the third item is additions to the agenda. I'd like to state that the item K, which is a facilitated discussion between mayor and council strategic goals update, has been moved to November 27th and will not occur tonight. Are there any other additions to the agenda? All right, we're going to start with public input because we have a full house tonight. So, thank you very much for coming out. People can stand at the microphone, which is to your right, and state your name for the record. So, who would like to come up first? You have five minutes.
Five minutes, cool, cool. I don't think I'm going to take five minutes, we'll see. Hi there, my name's Brian. I live in Champaign, but I work in Urbana. And I'm just a frequent hanger outer in Urbana. And what I wanted to talk about today was something I've been thinking about a lot. And it's kind of like skateboarding and a third space. So, I'm really into skateboarding. We have a fantastic skateboard community here. There's all kinds of events and music shows and kind of like public projects. Like, we have No Board Left Behind where we refurbish our old skateboards and distribute them to kids who are looking to skate. We've given skateboards to Dream and the Boys and Girls Club and the Up Center. So, we have like a really strong, really cool skateboard community right now. And it's just a bummer that there's no real legal space to skate in Urbana. And, you know, we're definitely working with the park district and getting a skate park. But beyond skate parks, there's also the option of just like a skate space. And this is something I've been seeing a lot, especially on the West Coast. I saw a really cool space in Cal Anderson Park when I was in Urbana. But it's basically just an area where the city is like, hey, skateboarders are allowed here. They can do their thing here. It's not specifically or only for skateboarding, which is really cool. But skaters can kind of do what they want. And that is just, it's just hard to find a place in both Champaign and Urbana to hang out with my friends where I'm not like, kind of being coerced into buying something or into drinking. So, a space like that in Urbana would be really cool. Along with the fact that, you know, there are a lot of kids. You know, I'm thinking of one child in particular, Siddiq, who, with his grandma, comes to Spalding Skate Park in Champaign. But they haven't been coming a lot recently with how dark it gets. And there's just not a lot of time to skate after school. So, it would just be really cool to have a space in Urbana because skateboarding is getting more popular. Now, I'm kind of rambling. But, you know, it's about to be in the Olympics again in 2024. And it picked up a lot of steam during the pandemic. So, you know, a skateboarding space, it could be anything from a reimagined plaza or even just like a vacant lot that you allow skateboarders to come in and bring some obstacles. But there's a lot of options there. And it's an entryway, not just into the sport of skateboarding. But if you go to Spalding Park and look around, you're going to see a lot of art. People do a lot of other things there, like RC cars and stuff like that. And we all mingle together and it's just a great hotspot for community. So, I just think skateboarding can make for a fantastic third space. Thank you.
Good evening, Urbana City Council. My name is Nicholas Dale. I am a resident of the city of Champaign, Illinois. I want to talk tonight about some of the laws that pass with the Safety Act that I think are pertinent to individuals within the government. Pattern or practice of violations. The Attorney General Act 15 ILCS 205/10 is amended to prohibit any governmental authority or agent of the governmental authority from engaging in a pattern or practice of conduct by officers that deprives any person of rights, privileges, or immunity secured or protected by the Constitution or the laws of the United States or by the Constitution or laws of the state of Illinois. The Illinois Attorney General is authorized to investigate allegations of violations and commence a civil action to obtain appropriate equitable and declaratory relief if the Attorney General believes that a violation has occurred. The remedies may include civil penalties up to $25,000 for a first violation and $50,000 for repeat violations. The second act I want to talk about, the Police Training Act 50 ILCS 705/6.3, specifically subsection C, Notice of Alleged Violation. There's six things that officers can't do that are considered decertification conduct. You can look that up. That's part B or subsection B of that same statute. But C states that the following individuals and agencies shall notify the board within seven days of becoming aware of any violation described in subsection B. A law enforcement agency, so, I mean, the Urbana Police Department, or even a civilian review board, an inspector general, and legal counsel for a law enforcement agency. So, you guys know who you are, who are part of that, and you're required by law to report that to the Illinois Law Enforcement Trainings and Standards Board. Lastly, since this is a city, and we have the lovely city of Chicago here in Illinois with all of its law-abiding officials that never commit corruption, 65 ILCS 5/10-1-34, this is from the municipality code. No person while holding any office in the government of such municipality or in nomination for or while seeking a nomination for or appointment to any such office shall corruptly use or promise to use either directly or indirectly any official authority or influence, whether then possessed or merely anticipated in the way of conferring upon any person or in order to secure or aid any person in securing any office or public employment or any nomination, confirmation, promotion, or increase of salary upon the consideration or condition that the vote or political influence or action of the last named person or any other shall be given or used in behalf of any candidate, officer, or party or any other corrupt condition or consideration. You can't use your political influence to ask something of corruption. I mean, there's several things that I'm concerned at or concerned about with the police. One of them is an app called FogReveal. The company is based out of Virginia. They're buying all of our cell phones' location data from Apple, Android, you name it, Google. And they compile patterns on where we go without getting the proper warrants to track a person's location throughout where they go. If every day I went to the coffee shop at 8:00 a.m., the police would know because they can buy that data from an application called FogReveal. There are certain Illinois statutes that further enumerate our rights as citizens here. The Freedom from Location Surveillance Act and the Citizen Privacy Protection Act, those mainly deal with if someone put a GPS tracker on someone's car, if someone was using a cell site simulator to track an individual's phone and patterns. The officers that commit violations of that without proper procedural bases also violate official misconduct, law enforcement misconduct potentially, and potentially obstructing justice, depending on what they're using it for, if it's intimidation. So, just everyone be aware now that you've been educated on this. I mean, if a lawyer sees this and wants to use this in a court of law and says, "Well, you unequivocally knew because Mr. Dale came and told you," then just beware. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address City Council?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Marion Harrington. I have a petition here that I'd like to present to the council. Subject of this petition is the development of Hope Village and Tiny Homes Community with intensive case management for chronically homeless and medically fragile homeless individuals. We residents of Carver Park subdivision, surrounding neighborhoods of both cities of Champaign and Urbana, and others interested in the preservation, welfare, and safety of the historical legacy of Carver Park subdivision, oppose the development of Hope Village. Propose to initially consist of 30 tiny homes and a community center adjoining Carver Park subdivision. And we desire proceedings of this development be halted. We oppose the opening of Carver Drive as access to this development and propose, without conceding, that if this development proceeds, permanent access be directed around Federal Drive and Kenyon Road. Let it be known, those signing this petition empathize with the needs, welfare, and safety of all homeless individuals, both chronically and medically fragile. Our utmost concern is for the safety and welfare of our children and residents and the preservation of the legacy of Carver Park subdivision, the first African-American subdivision built in Champaign, Urbana. As this petition says, we weren't given an opportunity to voice our opinion on whether we wanted the Hope Village development to come through or not. They just came through, dumped it on us, and expected us to take it. Well, we're not. So, we're not opposed of the homeless or any homeless. I volunteered the soup kitchen. So, I know the needs of the needy. What we proposed is tired of getting dumped on and people thinking they could do the black community any way they want to. So, this petition has 285 signatures on it. And we will present it to the clerk and hope the city reads it. That's four. Thank you.
My name is Eldris Melinda Carr. And I am bringing this part of petition. It is your copy of the updated letter for Hope Village that was read by the planning staff and to the minutes to be recorded in the public record for the Plan Commission meeting on November 9, 2023. And it's from the neighboring residents, including Carver Park, Crispus Addicts, Dr. Ellis, Martin Luther King subdivisions, and others in the surrounding community who are in opposition to the location of Hope Village. Secondly, there's a letter, copy of a letter from Sharice Hershey, alderperson from Ward III, who was sick on that evening. The memo was read by Audra Owens during the November 9 meeting. And if these needs to be read into the record, we can do that at a future time. And more information will follow. We're working on presently information regarding the Hope Village project plans.
Hello, my name is Andrew Valentine. I live at Ivanhoe Trailer Park. I run a small skateboard shop here downtown at Race and Main. Christopher Evans walked in the store a couple of weeks ago, maybe. So, we have been talking and hopefully we can plan somehow to create a skateboard park downtown Urbana as well as making it maybe paint-friendly as well. Spalding Skate Park in Champaign welcomes people to paint there as well as bring in obstacles. But we will really take really anything. If you could like potentially designate us a parking lot, maybe with a fence around it, maybe like a roof would be great, but we'll really take anything. So, it's just, we as skateboarders, there are two skate parks in Champaign. There are zero in Urbana, zero in Savoy. There's a lot of fun stuff to skateboard around town. However, it is not technically legal. So, if we were able to create a safe space for people who identifies themselves as skaters, you know, roller skating, biking, scooters, skateboards, it would be monumental for the area. It would attract people from other parts of the state. And it would attract people from all over to come skateboard here in town. And yeah, we do a lot of events and a lot of cool stuff. These are my buddies, Brian, who just talked earlier. He does awesome stuff for the community. But yes, my name is Andrew Valentine. And Urbana would benefit exponentially from a skate park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else like to address the council?
My name is Robert Lewis, former council member. On last Tuesday, we had a nice meeting with the commission to review some of the details associated with the development of Hope Village. One of the things that the people have brought to you already has been a combination of a lot of the concerns of the people. And from an engineering standpoint, I had several. And I had some of my questions answered, some I did not. In the packet that I received, I noticed that they were concerned with resident homes and also institutional, the land use requirements. It shouldn't be debated at this point, if you're ready to fly. I'm concerned with, it's not really my concern. It's more the developer's concern into what he has to put into these facilities. If it's institutional, as some of the information that came out in the planning meeting, for example, if they're going to have people that need medical care, then facilities have to accommodate that, if it's institutional in nature. If it's just residential and you're just going to stay there, that's like a house, right? That's fine. But those kinds of things shouldn't be nebulous at this point. And I noticed in the drawings, they both had the same number. I don't understand that. I would like a clarification on that. But over the past several months, I've been listening very carefully to what the community wanted. I've reviewed the drawings. And as they mentioned, they're not concerned about what these people do. But the fact of how they approached this project was critical to the neighborhood. My understanding is that the petition was made because they were to use Federal Drive as an entry point. Carver Drive, they arbitrarily used, which was in Champaign, which caused the conflict between the neighborhoods because they lobbied the people in Champaign and didn't discuss it with the people in Urbana. But it's being built in Urbana. It's a real calamity of errors. I propose I will come up with something I'll share with them to address their concerns and present it to the council. And in comparison to the design people that have worked already, I hopefully it will address all of those issues. But I don't have it for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else like to address the City Council this evening?
Hello, my name is James. I just came here to also speak in support of building a skate park here in Urbana. My friend Andrew told me that you guys would be considering it. Maybe you're talking about your priorities in the next few years, and that might be one that you're considering. So, I just wanted to say I think it would be great for Urbana. You know, skateboarding is a great activity for a lot of kids who maybe are not team sports type kids. It's a great activity where they can, you know, go out there and push themselves and learn something about, you know, what it takes to learn how to skateboard. It's a great place where people can interact, you know, of different ages, different ethnicities, all that type of stuff. It's a very inclusive type of environment. I think Urbana would benefit from it. I think there's a lot of great examples of cities across the Midwest and across the United States and the world that have done great skate parks. And, you know, I think Urbana has a great opportunity. I think that, you know, skateboarding is maybe a little bit overlooked in the Midwest, but also here in Urbana. And that just means that there's a great opportunity for, you know, us to really step up and do a great job for skateboarding. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you for your input. Does anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on now. Email. Oh, I'm sorry. Grace? Or Chandra? Or Jaya? Oh, I have an email. I can, you got it?
Yeah.
I have an email. Yes, this might be the one. Thank you for reminding me. All right, this is public input from Julie Watkins. To the Urbana City Council, please read this email during public comment. Thank you for the opportunity. One second.
Hello.
Can you give me a moment so I can finish this email and then you can talk? Thank you. Please read this email during public comment. Thank you for the opportunity to share my observations. The council is now in the process of updating the mayor and city council's strategic goals for 2024, 2025. Last week, before the beginning of the goals discussion, the only department that made a presentation was the police department. This seems lopsided, especially as in the staff report that Chief Boone led. He said he's understaffed for what he wants to do. He also mentioned an all-hands approach in his report as something new, which was suggested and discussed during the goals discussions, according to the reports back from the small group discussions. I realize he's new to his position and has ideas and apparently wants to plan for growth. I also understand the budget has already been passed. But I try to watch every city council meeting and budget amendments come up frequently. The strategic goals for the city will have budget effects. The council will be setting goals for the next two years. At the listing session that I attended a few days ago, days after last week's meeting, there were a couple, maybe more, about why more officers. I wanted to comment upon the problematic timing of a request that would mean a budget increase coinciding with your updating of strategic goals for the city. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Julie Watkins, Urbana resident, Ward 5. All right. Please state your name for the record.
Tanner Coleman.
Can you move the mic a little closer to you?
Hello.
Yep.
My name's Tanner Coleman. And I'm, I have a skew-up shirt. That's where Andrew has his business at. And lots of people skateboard purely for fun, but other people and me myself skateboard to clear your mind. Like, during COVID, there was a lot of things going on. So, I'd skateboard for maybe eight to 12 hours a day, just outside or in my garage. But the problem with having a skate park only in Champaign was driving 20 minutes just to get there to skate legally. And during COVID, I didn't have a car. So, I'd have to ask my mom or my dad to drive me. And then sometimes they'd get mad at me. If there was a skate park in Urbana, many kids could just go out and skate to the skate park. While Urbana kids, right now, can't really skate all the way to Spalding. It would take like two hours, probably. I started skating when I was two. My dad really got me into it. And seeing that there hasn't been anything done in Urbana, not even like a small space, it's kind of disappointing. The exercise you can get from it, you can get a really good leg workout. And that's all.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else like to address the City Council? Are there any other emails that need to be read? Okay, let's move on to the Public Health Harm Reduction Program of Joe Trotter. Please come up to the table up here. When you sit down, make sure the mic is on and is close to you. All right, and I think Chris is going to give you an introduction.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yes, tonight, Joe Trotter is an employee of the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, serving as their Harm Reduction Program Coordinator. Joe has been working in the field of harm reduction and disease prevention for over 15 years. He helped start a syringe exchange in Champaign County in 2009. He has expanded syringe access and overdose prevention in east central Illinois and has served as an advocate for harm reduction practice in the public health field. And with that short introduction, Mr. Trotter, you have the floor, sir.
And you said I had about 10 minutes? Oh, good, there's a clock. Thank you all for having me. Chris just asked that I come and give just kind of an introduction to our program. We have a few topics that we focus on. Primarily, it's for people that use drugs or people that know people that use drugs or people that see people that use drugs. So, we have a syringe exchange program that we've operated since 2009. We started very small within the Health Department. The first year that we did it, we gave out about 3,000 syringes. Currently, this year, we've given out over 200,600 syringes. So, we have a very growing, expanding program. The need has dramatically increased. The reason for syringe exchange is it's the number-one way to lower the spread of a disease, primarily hepatitis C in the community. So, the drug-using community needs clean syringes in order to prevent getting a disease. So, that's the main intent for it. It's a proven, evidence-based practice that's one of the most efficient and inexpensive ways to lower the rate of hepatitis C in a community. So, that's our primary goal. When people access our agency for services, we kind of have a meet them where they're at type of model that's client-led. So, if the client comes to us and just needs supplies and needs to be going about their day, that's what we do. But then we also have the time to talk to the client about whatever else concerns or issues that they want to talk about. So, if they're looking for housing options, if they're looking for job placement, if they're looking for medical care, we can help refer them to that. So, it's meant to be an entry point into the medical system that for a lot of folks, particularly the folks that use drugs, they can have a fairly negative experience accessing medical care. So, the intent is to give them a very welcoming place where they can be seen without any kind of judgment or stigma. We operate out of the Public Health District. We mask our services to be just like any other services that someone might get inside public health. So, we do it in that way so it's not identifying for folks. During COVID, we expanded our services to include like a vending machine style of helping people get supplies in an after-hours kind of way. And that really expanded our program immensely. And we kept that going after COVID as well. So, it's a way for people to get supplies from us after hours or on the weekends when we're not open. And then the other service that we provide is overdose prevention. And there's a couple ways that we do that. The primary way is providing Narcan, which is a medication that's given to someone if they're experiencing an overdose. It stops the overdose from progressing. So, that's a medication that we get from the state and we distribute it out into the community. We, this year, have passed 10,000 kits that we have given out. We also do that in an extremely low barrier kind of way. Someone says, "I need a kit for me, my friends, my neighborhood." We supply them with a kit. No questions asked, no forms need to be filled out. We don't have any special requirements for it. Part of that is because of the grant that we have that helps us acquire those syringes. But the other part is because Illinois now has a standing medical order that covers the entire state, which allows anybody to carry and administer Narcan on anyone else. This is a really, really great change for Illinois. It removed a lot of barriers for people to be able to access Narcan. The reason that that is allowed because of the standing order is primarily because the medication is so safe. It doesn't have any other complications with any other kind of medical condition or... It doesn't have any other complications with any other kind of medical condition or, or medical history on someone, has no interactions with any other drugs or medicines. If, it only affects someone if they have opiates present. If they don't have opiates, opiates present, then nothing happens. So it's a really, really great medication. It's absolutely proven to be life-saving. We know that overdoses are up. They're up everywhere. The most recent data says that Illinois overdoses are up about 5% from last year. So they're going up. Drug use is going up, and when drug use goes up, overdoses go up. So really, our program is designed to provide Narcan to, right now, the data tells us anybody that wants it should have it. And a lot of people that don't know they should carry it should probably carry it because of the amount of overdoses that are happening. And overdoses are an emergency. They're not predicted. You can't tell when they're going to happen. For someone that uses drugs, they don't know that they are going to be experiencing overdose when it happens. It's an emergency. And so part of this is to help people prepare for if this emergency happens nearby you, you need to have Narcan present. So we provide a lot in Narcan. We give a lot out. And our grant area is not only for Champaign County, but surrounding counties as well. We have a 10-county region of Illinois that we cover. So we partner with a lot of other health departments in those 10-county regions. That's part of why we give out so many kits, because we have a vast area to give it out in. We supply the kits to, not only to individuals, but to agencies, businesses, centers, so we can give kits to people to give to someone else, which happens a lot. So someone will come to us and say, hey, I'm worried about my neighborhood. And we'll say, well, how many houses are in your neighborhood? How many other people do you think need, will need kits? And we can supply them with as many as they want. We really have no restrictions about supplying Narcan to the community. We also provide Narcan training, which is, it's not required to carry Narcan, but if people want it, we can do more official training with them. I don't have the numbers for how many trainings we've, or how many individuals we've trained this year, but it's been a lot. So we do a lot of trainings for all kinds of groups. I spoke to a Salvation Army group earlier today and did a training with them. I spoke to a church last week and did a training with them. So we do all kinds of trainings. The idea with our program is we want to have as few barriers as possible for people to get the supplies, the harm reduction supplies, supplies that we provide, or to get access to Narcan. So we are, we deliberately set up our program to be as barrier-free or as possible. And we also do a little bit of access for hepatitis C. If someone tests positive for hepatitis C, there is a medication out now that helps them, because, it gives them a cure. There is a cure for hepatitis C now. So a lot of what we do is navigation, help people navigate the medical system. Often, particularly for folks that use drugs, the medical system is not prepared to handle them and has not had a good history of treating them well. So we do a lot of navigation help with them to help them understand their medical insurance. And, you know, when the nurse says these particular things, that's what they're going to need. So we do a lot of kind of preparation work to help them get ready and have the best chance at treatment possible. That's about all the time I have. I don't know if, do we do questions during this kind of time? Okay, I'm, I'm all done with anything I had to talk about, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in and letting us know about all your services.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, well, we can take a couple of minutes to ask questions. Chris?
Okay, thank you, Joe, for coming in.
Yeah.
Real quick comment, just to give context here. We had 26 gun homicides in 2021. Town panicked. We, that's all we talked about. It went down to 17 gun homicides in 2022. Consider this, we had 69 drug overdoses in 2021 and 67 in 2022. I guess my first question, I don't know where it is this year, but anyway, what, my first question is, Mr. Trotter, is if I'm using cocaine or heroin, and I'm assuming that's what syringes are primarily for?
And methamphetamine.
And meth, okay. Can I come to the CU Health District and could you test my heroin or my cocaine or my meth for fentanyl?
We do have fentanyl test strips that we can provide for you to, for you to take home and test your drugs with, yeah.
And I'll be shown how to use the test strip?
Yeah, and it actually has a, we have a little QR code for a video for it also. There are instructions on it, but we found a video was really helpful, too.
Okay.
So that's something that we provide, yes.
And just to be clear, anyone you work with, you do not turn them over to law enforcement for prosecution, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
Do you have any sense of how many drug addicts we have in this county? I saw, I saw 10-county region.
Yeah.
But do you have any kind of sense of how bad the problem is here in Champaign County?
I mean, I, I can only base that on, the only data that I can show is the, the amount of syringes that we give out, which is a, a small snapshot of drug use in our community. And so that's, that's always grown. Does that mean we have a lot of people that use drugs here? Yes, but I don't know that we have a rate that's any different than any other city in the same size as ours. So I know national trends tell us drug use is up everywhere.
Yeah.
But I, I would not say that we have something that is any different than any other city of our size.
Do you have any sense of what the drug treatment is like in the county jail?
A drug treatment at the county jail? It is Advil and Gatorade is the drug treatment that's given right now for, for someone who is withdrawing off of opiates. If they have a prescription for Suboxone, which is one medication that can be taken during opiate withdrawal, they will continue to allow that. They'll allow the person to maintain that prescription. But if someone comes in without a prescription for what they call, it's medically assisted recovery. So when you use opiates, when you stop using opiates, your body has a lot of terrible symptoms that it creates. It's different for everybody, but it's nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, sweats, it's bad, which is why the drug is reused so much. So for folks that have already established medically assisted recovery, the jail will continue that, continue that prescription for it. For folks that are not on medically assisted recovery, it's aspirin and Gatorade.
Okay. Last question. Have the local police departments been given Narcan and training to use Narcan and correctional officers as well?
Yeah, we, we have supplied both Champaign Police, the county police, and Urbana Police with Narcan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Joe.
Hi.
Do, when overdoses show up at the hospital, is there like any sort of education from the hospital to say like, CU PhD has these Narcan kits? Or do the hospital give them out?
Yeah, so, yes, through, through caral addiction recovery, they actually have Narcan that they can give to individuals at the, at the ER. They also have substance use navigators, which are people with lived experience, to help folks, kind of help guide them through their medical visit while they're in the ER. And that's, that's newer. Just within the past few months, that has started at the ER.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to share, I'm part of an organization that invited CU PhD to come in and do the training. We definitely appreciate it and keep Narcan on hand, too. So I just want to encourage people. It's really simple to get the training set up. The CU PhD was wonderful to work with, so I would strongly encourage people to do that because the more people have Narcan on hand, the better we can do to try to keep community members safe and try to reverse some of what we're talking about in, in that trend of, of losing more, more of our members of our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time and for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is council input and communications. Would anybody like to provide council input? James?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the community for coming out tonight and particularly to Mr. Lewis for investing in this question. And I look forward, I have a lot of confidence with him looking at, I look forward to what he can bring to us as council. I do want to say that when we were looking at ARPA funds and presentations, I understood Hope Village to be entered through Federal Drive. And that is the plan that I supported to be put in the ARPA funds. And now that it's changed, I'm going to be here asking them to make sure they follow up with the plan that they started with and not change it substantially. Thanks.
Anybody else? Chandra?
Ward 5 will have its listening session with Chief Boone and myself this coming Thursday at Ilias, which is at 1701 East Main at 6:00 PM. So it's an opportunity to hear about crime stats specific to the Ward 5 and learn about, you know, his, his vision for the Urbana Police Department and, and ask questions and interact with the new police chief. So I welcome everyone to join us on Thursday at 6:00 PM at Ilias.
Any other input? Jaya?
Yeah, an announcement about a listening session with Barry Dunn, which is the consultant that is doing our public safety review, came out. So just to make sure that people know that on Wednesday, November 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there is a community safety listening session at Forest Squares Church, which is located at 2101 East Washington Street in Urbana. That input is really important to us as we kind of decide what direction we're going with our public safety efforts overall. So we hope that community members will come out and join us.
Any other input? All right, well, I'll give my input for the moment. I, I wanted to thank all of the community members that joined Jaya and I at the listing session on Thursday. I was really happy to hear people's questions and, and the people who showed up, so I wanted to thank that community for doing that. The second thing I'd just like to say to the people in the audience at the moment is I hope that you are also going to the city council in Champaign. I think Mr. Lewis eloquently said how messy the situation is with Carver Park and Urbana. And so thank you very much for coming and, and giving us more information about how your community, your concerns of your community. At the end of the day, Carver Park Street belongs to Champaign, but certainly, you know, the building of it and the planning commission has to approve something that's built in Urbana. So thank you again for coming out. And I believe that closes the council input. All right. Reports of standing committees. I don't believe there are any. Committee of the whole. So I'm going to go ahead on behalf of the committee and move these items. Do we need a second for this? Okay, all right. So committee of the whole, the consent agenda. Resolution number 202311090R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement, supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement for the New American Welcome Center. And resolution number 20231109R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement, supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement with the Refugee Center. And resolution number 202311089R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Illinois Department of Human Services grant agreement, supporting municipalities for asylum seeker services agreement with the Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office. And resolution number 202311088R, resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And ordinance number 202311041, an ordinance vacating a street from Boydin Street, east of Cunningham Avenue, between Oakland Avenue and Care Avenue. And ordinance number 202311040, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, maintaining the number of Class R and T1 license, liquor licenses for David Candlin, LLC, DBA booming rings, 1309 East Washington Street in Urbana, Illinois. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Oh, second.
It was moved by me and seconded by Chandra. With the clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Wu? Yes. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, next up on the agenda is the regular agenda with no items. Reports of special committees, which is listed twice for some reason, but there's still no information. New business and discussion has been moved again to November 27th. Finally, with no further business in front of the city council's meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.